Uh, we old, bro.
Hey, come on, man. You gotta be able to say how many times you put a person, a person in a position to win, bro.
Oh, damn, bro.
How many times you put a person in a position to win? I got, I got proven fact. People gonna say, "Yeah, bro came to me, put me on the show. Bro did this, bro did that, bro asked me to do this." They can't say that.
Yo, we are off and running. Oh, No Signals TV, man. I'm in here with Big Brother Kevin.
I'm hot.
It's thirty-eight. So, look.
Hot as a fish, Green.
Look, we about to bullshit. We gonna get into the verse video. We gonna come back with Big Brother 'cause he got a lot to talk about. Big campaign coming up, but he got some shit he wanna talk about.
Hot as a fish, Green.
No Signals TV, man, y'all.
Bro, he a kid, bro. He's only like fifteen, sixteen. He play basketball.
Thank God for the day, even though the Jayce is out. Just show love to our face. We from a place where you don't make it out. Shit be all good. You know them days with the parade about. Go in when it get dark, sitting outside might get your brains falling out. Thanks for the support. See, this the port nobody care about. Where you hit licks with the homies that probably air you out. Where you can't pick shit, we all got roaches in the house. Your mama gotta move in, just gonna blow down granny house. Little brother finessing somebody, put shots in Amy house. Between trapping and rapping, how my kids gonna eat a Grammy now? Ooh, them pockets broke, you can't even afford a Grammy now. Nobody got applications. We so dope to help the family out. Sheesh. I know we may seem hopeless because we hopeless. My nigga just got shot, you keep on talking about me voting. What good are these emotions when everyone else is frozen? Boosting wasn't a choice, but they mama still gotta clothe them. Where fiends pray for intervention, but everybody's bitchin'. Paying the bills is harder than what's cooking in the kitchen. Tireman plays howl and ain't none of my niggas living. Why minimum wage eight dollars? How y'all building so many prisons? How our country in debt when it's us that's doing the printing? A trillion dollars in debt before walls Trump got some billions. We ain't the ones he bringing in drugs, but they still kill us. Off that, we making a living. Off that, y'all making a killing. Niggas don't pick up cotton no more, they pick up trash. They say it's part of the system, just slavery with a mask. We ain't worried about that. We just focused on the bag. All the women shaking that ass, or the ops that can't get a pass, and it's sad. 'Cause all of the babies wanna be dads, and the dads can't be the fathers to kids they shouldn't have had. See somebody doing bad, you look at them and say, "Damn, we hoes all in the straws." You could've helped them, and you laugh. Seems like we from the home where nobody can support you. And the baby mamas twerking, how they gonna raise our daughters? When we won't donate to keep the barber shops open, but we at the corner store. Hoppie got Lucy's for a quarter. What happened to supporting our own businesses? I ain't gonna act like I don't be in Dr. Styles kicking shit, but it's just crazy how we tuck the work and keep the stick. Two impression shorties that smashing homies before the sentence hit. So, you see why we can't live out Martin's dream? Cash made everything around me say, "Get the cream." Every time I flex, and I just plot on bigger scenes. And twelve plot to take us down, and niggas plot to clean your bean. So, I guess we from a place, or it may seem, where statistically we die before we ever live our dreams. So, I guess we from a place, or it may seem, well statistically we gonna die before we ever live our dreams. Support the port.
Alright, uh, No Signals TV. I am back with Big Brother Kevin Spears, City Councilman Kevin Spears. How you doing, brother?
Hot, man. Still hot, man. Hot, man. Hot, bro. You already.
Yo, we supposed to be talking about campaign season, man.
We talking about the campaign. I'm campaigning for my life out here, bro. Campaigning for my life out here.
I mean, I don't even know how to address it. I mean, can you say it comes with a territory type now?
It does, and I didn't know. I mean, honestly, bro, I mean, we've been talking about it behind the scenes, and the, and the reality is, uh, you know, I think based on how I lead for this community, I mean, I don't think you can ever speak ill of me. I just don't. I don't think you can ever speak ill of me, and I'm gonna say this for the record. I don't care what you are. Blood, GD, crib, damn MS-13, lackey. I don't care what you are. Every day when I get up, when I perform my job, in, in the capacity that I perform my job, it's to look out for you. I don't never jump on and try to tear you down. What I do is I come out here and say, "Listen, protect the community. Protect the hood. Protect the hood at all costs. People that are not involved should not be endangered, nothing that nobody else got going on in this community, flat out." That's how I feel about it. But I ain't kicking nobody back in, but if you do something stupid, then understand it's stupid. I ain't yelling free nobody that ought to be locked up. I'm not doing that.
I can do that.
But speaking ill on my name to do what? It, it's not gonna, it's, it's not gonna help nobody, bro.
Do you think that's just the, the sense of the community way we at with it as far as like?
I think that's just the mentality, man. People think that they're supposed to, it's hard. I know a couple weeks ago, I said, "Man, go ahead and give people their kudos. Give people, give people their praise for what they do." You know what I mean? You don't gotta say, like, when I walked in here, and you know, just between me and you, but the camera rolling, I ain't say, "Oh, man, I like that little cop there."
Right, right, right.
Did I say the little cop? I said, "Bro."
Yeah, that's.
Hey, that's a nice joint outside. I'm in the wrong profession.
Right, I said, "That's my man shit."
But I ain't come in, "I like your little cop, bro."
Yeah.
Nah.
I, I, that's one of my things that I hate too. I do not call nobody whatever they got.
Why are we slighting, why are we slighting folks?
I never do that.
We don't gotta slight folks?
Right, right, right.
Be big in your capacity. I'm gonna be big in my capacity. Let's meet in the middle and do business if we can. How many people do that? How many people calling about business ventures? Nobody. When, when they call, it's to their benefit. So, still, when you call, and it's to your benefit, you gotta do like you would do. Nah, it ain't like that. You know what I mean? It ain't like that.
I mean, but it takes a special type of person to say no, though.
Bro, really? Really, though? I mean, we are who we are.
Right.
But at the end of the day, man, we come from a different, different genre, different generation. You know, I, we come from a thorough generation. We don't revert to, we, I ain't even gonna say revert, 'cause that mean go back, but we don't take on the new characteristics of the new generation. That ain't us.
Alright, I can dig that.
And I'm born in nineteen seventy-six, and I can't wear no skinny jeans. I can't walk around sagging. I can't.
Yeah, I, I feel you.
You know what I'm saying? I'm in my lane. I'm in my lane.
Because like you said, you are on the campaign tour now, you understand?
I am, I am, and don't get that confused. It's still reelect Kevin Spears for City Council.
Absolutely, and that was the whole point of having me on here, having you on here again, because I told you, it's time to get reelected. Come back and holler at me, we gonna get this shit cracking again. Oh.
And, and I appreciate the platform, man. I, I'm glad to see you come back. Listen, I'm sorry I missed a few episodes. I missed a few episodes, clearly. I missed, I missed a few episodes, but guess what, folks? I know. If you know, you know. I know now.
Hey, man, look, man, I, all I can say about that is, man, everybody entitled to their opinion. I ain't gotten to agree with it, you understand, on the whole form, but I, I can only say like, hey, man, if you man enough to say it, you gotta be man enough to stand on it most of the time, so.
Hey, man, but I, I, I do like the, the new thing that the, the young folks saying. They say, "Stand on business."
Stand on business.
Stand on business. You gotta stand on business.
Right, right. Do you think, do you think in your community, do you, you know, you said that you, you originally came in, you said it's different now because you already in your position, now you getting different looks from the community, almost hate from the community now, certain.
In some instances, very small instances, man, 'cause I, I mean, and right here, I'm gonna talk out of both sides of my mouth. Because I ain't around like that, you know what I mean? But when I say I'm not around like that, that means there are certain places that I'm not gonna go because of my position. Now, do I still have my ear to the streets? Yes. Can you catch me? You can, you can almost catch me anywhere. You know what I mean? Like, I, I'm, but I know how I need to move. As, as somebody that, that the majority of the people in this community are proud of, I know how I need to move. So, I'm trying not to let my people down. Trying not to let my people down, just trying to handle business.
You think it's harder now because, 'cause you been doing it for so long?
I, I think this, this year got hard. This year got tough, no lie. It was, it was a tough year, man, because I think, I woke up this morning and I was thinking to myself like, "Yo, this was a lesson for you." And the lesson for me was that you think you are beyond certain stuff, and you're not. You know what I mean? And, and, and that was a tough lesson, because I love my city. You know what I mean? I do, even, even the people that I don't even, I don't mess with like that. They don't mess with me like that. We may have had a past or whatever. If, if you can find it in your heart to humble yourself and come to me to get help, you gonna get that help. Like, I'm not gonna not help you because of an issue we had twenty years ago. You know what I'm saying? But please believe, in this current age, if you do something and I pick up on it, oh, I'm not rocking with you.
I mean, only because you grew up here, you're known in the community, is it easier to, to rock with the young ones? Rep, you understand, like, like you said?
I think it's easy. I think it's easy, man. I, I talk to people that I don't know, but they, those are the younger kids. You know what I mean? There, there is a, a age group that I don't interact with that much, because I think a lot of people don't interact with them because of their demeanor. And it's not that, I think they feel like they don't need anybody. They, they gonna figure it out on their own. You know what I'm saying?
I was about to say one time, though.
True, but we didn't hide the leadership. You know what I'm saying? Who was, who was there to instruct us? What?
We, we had quite a few in different capacities.
But I mean, in this capacity.
Like, like nah, not really. Not, not, I mean, but I gotta say, we was kinda spoiled. We had a, a Judge Goodson. We had a Joe McQueen. You know, Mr. McQueen would pull up at A Street Center and pull up.
But guess what? Now, think back, and I'm, I'm just speaking for me. The mentality or the attitude towards them was fear. You did not wanna go in front of Judge Goodson.
Not on no BS.
And, and your down shoulder didn't wanna see Joe McQueen.
Not on no BS, but if you wasn't on no BS, they, they.
Well, bro, then I was always on BS.
I mean, but they weren't hunting you, though.
They weren't hunting me, but I mean, I, I, when I was, when I was youthful, and, and when I wasn't on that court, I was, I was on some BS. I mean, I wasn't.
You was outside.
Yeah.
I mean, but at the same time, I don't feel like you was being hunted. You understand, like?
But they wasn't, I don't think they was as accessible, as accessible as I am throughout the community.
I agree. I agree. Do you think, like, do you think that helped to hurt you that you were accessible, that you, that you got that much?
I think it's a gift and a curse, to be honest. Like, I love it. I, I love, I love the attitude. I love the response that I get from people when they see me. You know what I mean? Because they know where I came from. They know I'm one of them. But also, they looking and say, "Damn, like, you did that."
Right.
And really, the moral of the story is, if I can turn it around, you can turn it around. You may not be able to turn it around in the capacity that I turned it around in, but you can turn it around, 'cause you said, "I was outside." And I, and, and I talked about that the last time I was here, so I don't even wanna talk about that no more.
We ain't going into that.
But the, the reality is, like, man, if, if you just get your mind right, you can do what you wanna do. It don't, it don't have to be politics. It, it could be whatever you want it to be. It could be business. I mean, come on, man, I do more than politics. I hold shows. I put shows together. You know what I mean? I, I, I'm a businessman.
That's real good shit.
Like, for real, for real. I'm a businessman. Like, I'm, I, I make moves.
Right, absolutely. And that comes from where you came from.
It comes from where I came from, and, and I make moves for the culture.
Right.
People come, "Oh, there's nothing to do in Wilmington," blah, 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 blah. Now, you look, there are things that I've done with my partners, multiple partners, that other people mimic. Alright? "Oh, well, he doing politics now. We gonna do this now." "Oh, he, he in politics now. We gonna do this now."
Right.
Bro, I don't hate on nobody.
And I was gonna, and that was my last question before we go into the break. I was gonna say, what did you, what do you think from when you started? Just tell it right here. What do you think that you've accomplished, and what do you see that, 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 the stuff that you kinda steer to move towards the right direction since you've been on term?
Since, oh, I mean, man, I think, look at, look at the initiatives in this community. You got, before I got elected, I, I had clothing drives, I fed the homeless. You know, I participated in, in any initiative, trunk of treats, you know what I mean, back to school drives, all of that stuff. And we've seen those things become more popular amongst people that are closer to the background that you and I share, that we come from.
Absolutely.
So, you can't say that this didn't spark something. You know what I mean? I just moved to the business side of stuff to handle business as an elected official, to set it up. Not, not where you gotta know somebody to get something done, the fact that it's supposed to be done because you're a citizen of the city of Wilmington. And if it's not being done, then boom. Let me call the person that I know that can handle it. And I say, "Listen, go back through the process. We don't wanna, we don't wanna skip the process. We want you to participate in the process to make sure that the process is working like it's intended to." So, if you call a number, like, if they didn't pick your trash up on Tuesday or Monday, don't call me, councilman, they ain't pick up my trash. Call them. Call them, "Hey, listen, my trash wasn't picked up." Now, if they don't come back and get your trash, or they tell you, "Well, we came through and, you know, your trash came and went out there." You know it wasn't. You got a picture of it. Then you call me, and then I call them. "Hey, listen, this citizen at such and such address said that, that, that their trash wasn't picked up." And I'm not even calling the people that work. I'm calling their boss, 'cause I, you know what I mean? I don't have to talk to the work. I'm gonna call the boss and get it handled. Listen, this is the issue that I have, and I do that often. Like, I had somebody call me. They got an issue. I need y'all to fix it.
That happen a lot?
That happens a lot.
Well, look, we go down, we need to get to a campaign shit, 'cause you was, you was thirty-eight.
I'm still hot.
We gonna get into this, uh, yo, what time for my cousin Push, man? We gonna get into this very real, man. We'll be back with Kevin Spears.
Yo, when I say, "Oh, my goodness, man," I mean, I do this shit for everybody that came up in that motherfucking struggle, nigga. Air hood, air trap, air block. This shit real out here. Niggas, niggas ain't they niggas. Niggas, bitches ain't they bitches. But we folk, 'cause we about to get to this motherfucking paper. Look, yo. Man, I can't lie, shit been real, but I been doing good as I can, 'cause you can take the man out the hood, but you can't take the hood out the man. If you feeling like I ain't did shit, even though in the hood I'm the man. If you coming from a place like this, then I'm feeling like you should understand. See, I was in school with the book. I was in the hood with the grounds. Know I keep the drugs in the base, so a young nigga good with the band. Most niggas in the hood on the band still, trying to drill with the cash, so I can't lie, shit been real, but I been doing good as I can. Yo, mama told me that the fame was coming. Boy, one day you gotta change for something. Had to make a statement, nigga still faking funny thing, 'cause I came from nothing. Why they hate to see a real nigga winning? You would think I was a lame or something. Act like I won't catch a stain or something. Pull up on him with the gangsta flow. All I spit is real shit. If you don't feel that, then you can feel this. You thought a couple bands will make you feel rich. It's more my watch a bracelet they can chill with. Got a bad bitch, I'm trying to build whip. Club bout to close, nigga still lit. Call up the bros, getting still lit. You don't wanna make me hit the kill switch. It's like every time a nigga turn his head, another hit a fade, another mama broke. And the son's growing up without a father, so they toting guns and they selling dope. I can't blame you, bro. Go get on your feet. If you in the streets, better know the ropes. Yeah, you had it all, then you lost the money, then you lost the bitches, now you losing hope. Man, I can't lie, shit been real, but I been doing good as I can, 'cause you can take the man out the hood, but you can't take the hood out the man. If you feeling like I ain't did shit, even though in the hood I'm the man. If you coming from a place like this, then I'm feeling like you should understand. See, I was in school with the book. I was in the hood with the grounds. Know I keep the drugs in the base, so a young nigga good with the band. Most niggas in the hood on the band still, trying to drill with the cash, so I can't lie, shit been real, but I been doing good as I can. Yo, top bell screaming fuck twelve, boy, you know them crackers can't tame us. Lot of pussy niggas changed up, but a hundred million can't change us. Used to loud when I walk by, now I pull up on them in a rage truck. If you in the hood selling dope with your ratchet, then we do the same stuff. Young MC with the hammer, I'm that motherfucker that they can't touch. Youngers got a hot air, time my body drop, yeah, you know they blame us. Always taking pics of these niggas with the cannon, they allow to frame us. Ten toes down from the start, they can never question why I came up. Man, I swear to God, it feel good to see all these people in the crowd for you. Talked about this shit for five years, know my niggas only all proud of. Air real nigga in your town, know me slim quiet nigga with the loud on me. Just a buck seven dripping in this ice, but right now, extra four pounds on me. I'm a money fiend living like a king, so they might as well go in the crown, homie. And they hate the way we took it to the top, but we ducked it up from the ground on. Yo, we fuck quick, we don't cop bitch, and I guarantee she going down, know me in that fuck shit we don't fuck with. Jump out in that water, we gonna drown. Man, I can't lie, shit been real, but I been doing good as I can, 'cause you can take the man out the hood, but you can't take the hood out the man. If you feeling like I ain't did shit, even though in the hood I'm the man. If you coming from a place like this, then I'm feeling like you should understand. See, I was in school with the book. I was in the hood with the grounds. Know I keep the drugs in the base, so a young nigga good with the band. Most niggas in the hood on the band still, trying to drill with the cash, so I can't lie, shit been real, but I been doing good as I can. Yo, Push Almighty, man. You know they ain't never want us to have shit, but while for, we gonna get it anyway. Real niggas stand the fuck up. If you from that struggle, I'm just like you. If you addicted to that hustle, I'm just like you. If you the been in that yard, I'm just like you, nigga.
I remember all nighters in that hole. Yo, yo, yo.
I'm a citizen. You know what I mean? Like, if I, when I, if I see the man, I wanna see the man when I'm in Ruth Chris. Wanna walk in and.
He a cool motherfucker.
He is, but guess what?
Back to No Signals, man. I, I know we cut off, but we gonna get it, we gonna touch some points, 'cause I, I didn't have Kevin time for a minute. But at the same time, man, it's important to, to have these conversations, you understand? And, and, and regardless on what you, what you got going, going on and coming up with the, with the new, with the recent election, we gotta get people out here and to get them to vote.
No doubt. And I'm asking for your vote. I, it ain't no BS about it. I'm asking for your vote, but I'm, I'm, and it ain't even about, I feel like I've earned your vote.
Right.
I, I feel like that, like I've earned your vote, bro. I, I, I feel like I will earn your vote as well. Like, I don't think I'm beyond asking for it. I don't think I'm beyond having to work for it either. I don't think it's a given, but with the body of work that's been presented.
I agree, because I, I, I see you, even on TV, you understand? I know the local media ain't always favorable when it comes to, you understand? And, and people don't, and I don't think people really get how it move, you understand? Like, like, I ain't about to get a lot of WECT watches, you understand? These people right here that's watching is, is people who, who really in tune and trying to hear something, you understand? So, my thing is, is even with the young ones, you know what I'm saying, when you were saying, like, the ones who, who are kinda approachable, those are the ones who, who still come to me and be like, "Bro, I could talk to you," you understand? Like, I, I could come on the show. And I want, I want them to see that you're approachable, you understand?
Right, and, and that's why I'm here too. That's why I'm here too, bro, because, you know what I mean, is everybody serves a purpose. Everybody is, is, can be a conduit for communication. You know what I'm saying? So, I don't, I don't, like I said, some, maybe we don't, we're not in the same environment. We're not in the same scene, or, you know, I don't know. Maybe, maybe it's a, it's a, I will say this, it, it, maybe we may, maybe I may have something that you want or you admire, you know what I'm saying? And that make you feel a certain way about it. You know what I mean? But, bro, that ain't my issue. The issue ain't with me. The issue, that's your issue. I, you, I can't get mad over you, get mad with you over something that's yours.
I agree.
You know what I'm saying?
Especially if you work for it.
If it's your, it's yours.
Right, regardless of how you got it.
How you got it is yours. I can't be mad with you over what's yours, whether it's your car, your woman. Can't be mad at you. Huh. It's a, it's a, it ain't a million women in the port, but guess what? I'm just saying. I'm just saying. I don't, I, listen, I don't wanna be hitting something behind somebody else. I'm just saying.
Hey, man, go.
I'm just saying. Bro, and if you, and if you can catch mine out here, shit ain't mine.
That's real spin. And that's, hey, that's, so, what do you think?
I just had to put it out.
I know, I know. They all know you like I don't. Hey, man, hey, but what do you think, um, what do you think that women, that, that is going next? And what you wanna accomplish that you feel like you haven't accomplished in office?
Man, I wanna, I wanna finish what we done. You know what I'm saying? So, right now, we got the MLK gym expansion coming. We, we've all played in that gym, but not all of us. Some of us played in that really well. I happen to be one of those. Uh, it was a, it was a middle school gym, so you know, the expansion, that gym is gonna be a high school sized gym. You know what I mean? You gonna have a commercial kitchen, so some of you entrepreneurial negroes out there can, uh, get your baking skills up, your catering skills, you know what I mean? You can go in the commercial kitchen and handle your business. You can rent it. You know what I mean? Go in there, handle your business, and, and, and be productive and be profitable. You know what I mean? Not, not in your kitchen doing stuff, which we ain't knocking you long as your kitchen clean, but go in the commercial kitchen, rent, rent, rent the commercial kitchen and, and handle your business, you know what I'm saying? And, and so, again, it's about creating a way for people, you know what I mean? Not, not just, not just socially, but in, in a businessman, you know? Take, take care of your folks and not just handle, not just be taken care of because you know me. Be taken care of because I created some policy for you, because I created legislation that allows you to do certain stuff.
You think it's gonna be, you think it's, you think with the current situation of the city council, do you think it's hard to get policy passed? Or do you think, like?
In some instances, in some instances, I believe it's hard on, on the social instances, like the Black Lives Do Matter mural, you know? It, it got passed, and, and we went through a lot of obstacles to get that done. But then after a period of two years, because there was a new iteration of the city council, um, they decided to move it, you know what I mean? And, and for, for those that don't know, the, the mural is still in Wilmington. It's just, it's beside the, the Boys and Girls Club.
That's dope.
Yeah, but you know, we, we, we still need to be going and paying homage to that, you know what I mean? Because we, we don't, we fought hard for that, man, and, and that's a part of who we are as a community, and, and it's beautiful outside of that. So, the eighteen artists who, who put their blood, sweat, and tears into that, like, you know, that's not something you just thumb your nose up at or something that you take for granted.
So, what do you think is next for, for black business and black entrepreneurship in the city, you understand? Where do you think we could go with it?
Well, I think, you know, I've been, I've been talking and harping on the fact that, you know, we need to make the, the process of getting resources in this community equitable, you know what I mean? It need to be evenly dispersed throughout the community. Uh, downtown is great. Uh, y'all need to quit going downtown, tearing it up and shooting and all that crazy stuff. Uh, downtown is great, uh, y'all need to quit going downtown, tearing it up and shooting and all that crazy stuff. We never did that. I, I just wanna let y'all know that. But also, you know, take care of the other businesses throughout the community, you know? Again, like, like renting the commercial kitchen, or creating opportunities for young entrepreneurs, not even just young, or old entrepreneurs. Let's just say, you know, you lost your job or you retired from a job, but, you know, you may wanna create something new. You know, go and rent a space, rent a building to do something, or just, just the opportunity that's there. And, and it doesn't have to happen by circumstance, you know what I mean? There's a process there that will allow you to be a business owner. There's a process there that will allow you to be prosperous, and, and we don't have to do anything that's detrimental to our community. And it may sound cliche, but that's real talk. If, if you listen to all this stuff, you know, some, some of the music and, you know, some of the podcasts, the, the more popular or nationally known podcasts where, where we have people talking, successful black people, you know, we are greater than just shooting the ball, running the ball, rapping, singing, you know what I mean? Some of us have, uh, beautiful minds, and you need to be able to put those minds to work. And like I said earlier, you have skills that are profitable, you just need to know how to package it together to, to make you successful.
That's dope. Hey, yo, I got a real question, because...
I got a real answer.
I went to Hanover, shout out to Hanover, man.
Oh, man.
Hanover stay in the news a lot, you understand? And I know, of course, you on the other side of the fence when it comes to a lot of things. What are your thoughts about Hanover? And I know you ain't on the school board, but what are your thoughts about that situation, man? And how can it be helped? And what do people need to understand about it?
Well, I, the, the thing about it is, and I would say that, that the situation has become way worse than any of us anticipated, you know? And, and that's the whole gang situation and, and what really transpires at these high schools and these schools. Um, but I think that the school system and the teachers and the powers that be need to be a little more in tune with what's going on. If, if a family has traditionally lived in a certain part of time, town, and they moved, don't make that child, and, and if that child has an issue, the people in the new part of town or at the new school, don't force that child to go to that school. Allow that family and that child to remain at the school that they're comfortable at, where, where there is no issue. And so that, that has, I know for sure that was one of the instances.
Definitely, I, I know what you're talking about.
Where a situation happened, and, and it wasn't beneficial to anybody.
It was bad, it ended up bad.
It ended up bad.
Right.
And so, you know, again, when you talk about people who are connected to the community and having a voice, but I, I'll say this as well. We need to quit being reactive in our community and be proactive.
Yeah, you said that.
Yeah, you, you're not, your, your activism or your advocacy has to be bigger than social media.
Right.
Like, come, come to a meeting, school board, city council, county commissioner, come out and let people see, perceive of concerned people in the audience. Because it's, it's difficult to make a decision about people when they're in the room. That's not gonna be favorable to that audience. It's easier to do something, uh, to make a decision about a, a group of people and they're not in the room. You, you won't even blink twice about it.
Right.
And so that's really kinda what happens to us a lot of times. We're not in the room, we're not in attendance, um, I think I said this before, it's easy to email me, it's easy to talk to me. You already know nine times out of ten how I'm thinking about an issue.
Right.
But as it relates to politics and how the city council will, will vote on the issue, I need three more votes, you know what I mean?
Right.
So if you don't email or call the entire council, you're expecting to lose, because you only trying to solidify one vote.
You need...
You need three more, you need four.
Right. Do you think, this is, this one last, do you think like, because you are from the hood, that, that, or you are accessible, that it's too much? Like, like honestly, you the only city council member that I see actively in the neighborhoods. You understand when it comes to other you and Mr., Mr. Peterson, Harper Peterson? I do see the mayor, sometimes he be sprinkled every now and then.
Right.
You understand? But when it comes to a lot of the city councilmen, I don't see them, I know Rabbit Bark ain't coming nowhere near.
I, I will say this, uh, Councilman Barnett is, is at DC Virgo every morning, opening the doors for students at, at DC Virgo.
I didn't know that.
And, and he's also the pastor at Warner Temple.
Shout out to Councilman Barnett.
But, um, you know, I've been trying to bring him along, get him, get him on board, get him to understand, you know, he's, he's an older, he's from a different generation than us. So he may not be able to understand some of the things that I understand, and he may not see things in the way that I do. But we, we have open eyes of communication between each other, so, you know? And he'll ask, "Well, what's important?" You know, "What, what's going on this week?" And, and we talk about it, you know what I mean? Because if it's important to y'all, and it's important to me, you know, I relay the message, that this, this is what we need to do, you know? And, and, and how we need to do it. So, you know, it, it's only one Kevin Spears, man, for real, for real.
Absolutely.
You know, and, um, I'm, I'm proud of that, but I, I think you ask, "Where do I see us going?" I, I wanna see, and I've seen some folks, and they're not here, but, you know, they, they're from here, and they reach out to me and they say, "Hey, you know, how, how can I do this?" Or, "I'm doing that," or whatever, and, and so there is hope, you know? There's hope for us to do greater things, but... A- and I understand this, that the opportunity is not here presently, you know what I mean?
Right.
But I've been trying to help bring us the opportunities, so if you wanna stay here, you can stay here.
Right.
But, you know, and I think for a lot of our youth and a lot of people, they do need to leave the port to see something different.
I agree.
They do.
I agree.
You, you need to, you need to open your mind up. I mean, it ain't no need to keep shooting over, um, Thirty Street, Nimble Street and, and Rankin and Red Cross.
And I be big on like teenagers going and seeing, like, right before they get out of high school, going and seeing like a black college, especially if they're black.
Man, definitely.
Just because you don't get to see unity, you understand? So when you go there and you can see unity in a whole community and network of people who you don't need to be in survival mode around, and then your people, it, it does something different to you.
That, that's the thing that changed me, man, when I was able to see us, I went to college, I went to college later, but I had some, I had some great people around me, but I was able to see the greatness in us. That was, that sparked the change in me, to be greater than, than just some supposed tough guy, uh, running around Wilmington.
Right.
At the end of the day, because when whatever happens to you, happens to you, that's that.
Right.
You know, I, I think I'm leaving a, a greater legacy now than I ever could have by being how I used to be.
And it's, and it's dope. Like I said, I, I love to see evolution, man, and I seen evolution. I'm appre, I'm appreciative of, of that, and I'm protective of that in my own sense, you understand?
No, I mean, hey, I appreciate you, you, we can say this, you know, we can spend hours just talking about how, how we share the love and how we've always shared the love, you know? Um, and, and I think it's, it's a real, it's huge when you, when I walk in room and you say, "Big bro." You know what I mean? Because I know you got folks looking up to you now, you know what I mean? And, and the folks that look up to you, they had no earthly idea of, of who I am outside of politics, outside of the man that's on the news, or, you know what I mean? Or, you know, the, the man that comes to the church, or, or when something is going on, you know, the, the, the man that their aunt or their uncle or their grandma talk about, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, they look up to you, and, and because of how we've always interacted, you know, I am big brother to you, you little brother to me, but I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm proud of what you've done, I'm proud of this, this platform, and I'm, I'm proud of how you, you have, you engage this younger generation that a lot of people may not understand. And, and I'll say this to them, like, don't get us wrong, man, like, we're not rooting against you, we're rooting for you, but we can't embrace some of the stuff that's happening in our community. We can't be, um, captive in our own community. That's where we need to be our safest at. We need to be safe at home. We need to be safe at home, and, and I don't care what you get from this interview, that's the, that's the biggest thing, we need to be safe at home, man. If, if we look like one another and we truly have love for one another, it don't matter. At the end of the day, who's gonna protect you? You. You know what I'm saying?
And that's, and that's why I'm big on just showing, showing the young ones that, yo, it doesn't have to be like that.
It don't, it don't, man. And, and those relationships have to matter. Man, how lo, how long we've known each other now? Longer than that.
Word.
It's longer than that, bruh.
It's probably about...
Close to thirty years.
Yeah.
Listen, I told you, I just turned forty-seven, brother.
Right, bro, you giving away our age.
And, but I'm saying, but I'm, but I'm saying...
Yeah, but, yeah, you right.
But even, even though they're not, they're not there yet, I'm saying that in twenty or fifteen years from now, it's gonna speak highly of who you are by how long you have, how many of these long friendships that you have.
Word.
And you and your friends who have been, who've known each other, seen each other millions of times in this period of time, still light up when you see one another, because you, because you know the friendship is genuine.
That's true.
Not like some of these old so, oh, nevermind.
Well, look, man, I done had yours long enough, I don't know if the camera, the camera went off on us early, but yo, look...
You know, the, the devil busy, man, when you dropping that signs like this right here, man, you know, it, it, it tends to, it, it, things happen.
Yo, so how can people support you? Where can they find you at and what they need to do?
Listen, you already know where to find me. Um, I'm Kevin Spears on Facebook, Martin Luther Kong underscore Junior on, on Instagram.
Absolutely.
Spears4ILMcitycouncil.com, that's the website, but man, you need to go to the Board of Elections, um, before, now until November the fourth, and, and cast that vote for Kevin Spears. Circle the dot in, put it in, if you're not registered, you can register same date. Uh, you need your ID, that's up until November the fourth now, on Election Day. You gonna have to vote in your precinct, you gonna have to have your ID, you gonna have to already be registered. Do not go to the polling places if you know you're not registered. Um, don't, don't allow them to, to, to tell you that you're in the wrong precinct and you wanna cast your vote. Ask them where your precinct is, go vote there. But if you unsure of any of those things, now is the time for you to vote. Hey, I, I appreciate your vote, I, I love representing this city, I love representing you on this Wilmington City Council. I promise you will not see me drunk in a sporty, you will not see me drunk in a shack, um, I promise. Um, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna try to, I'm not gonna beef with you about your old lady, I ain't gonna beef with you about my old lady, you know what I'm saying? Um, uh, what else is it for me to say? Like, keep being beautiful, and, 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 and women, listen, understand that, that you do play a huge part in this community. We go as we see you go.
Absolutely.
Um, real talk, and, and, and I'm not, I'm gonna say this, and I want you to understand what I'm saying. You can't allow a man to be a man, a man gonna be a man regardless. So when we lead, let us lead, but, but you also lead in your capacity, you know what I'm saying? And, and let's do this together.
Absolutely.
That's, that's how we need to do this, we need to do this together. Um, being, being divided and being separated is no good for our community. Look at how, how our children are reacting to, to what's going on in our community, and that's important. I, I'm more so proud to be a person that can speak black thought into our community and, and it not be BS.
That's...
You know what I'm saying?
Good shit.
So, um, I don't know, I, I, I talk my trash, I love you, um, for real, and, unless you're a sucker, unless you're, you're out here doing corny stuff, speaking on people's name that you shouldn't be speaking on.
Go ahead, yo. Yo, listen, my shout out, shout out to my cousin Key, my, my, shout out to, um, oh, man, I'm, nah, nah, I've been drinking it. Shout out to, uh, Rudy Carvalho.
Quit hating on people, y'all.
Oh, my God. Shout out to Rudy Carvalho, check us out on the line, uh, shout out to my cousin Dez at your service, shout out to my cousin T-Sen, uh, what's T-Sen's shit called, bro? He gonna kick my ass, man.
What, the limo?
Nah, bring it to the table, where he got the, uh...
The hot dog?
Shout out to the hot dog joint, they, nah, they got an event service, man.
And the camera thing?
Yeah, they got the event service.
T-Sen got a lot of stuff on.
Shout out to Himatia, man. Um, shout out to my little brother, uh, Plush Villain Entertainment, he about to change his rap.
He changed his name again. DJ No Cut.
Yeah, No Cut, yeah, DJ No Cut.
Yeah, see, I been knowing, I been knowing, I was trying to tell y'all.
You been in the loop?
I know what's going on out here.
Who else, man? Shout out to John, man, um, Design to a T, shout out to him.
Y'all quit hating out here in these streets.
Shout out to Fresh.
Need to quit hating.
Shout out to Fresh, shout out to, uh, Jam. I gotta have my man, true.
Shout out to Turtle.
You gotta have my man, Turtle, I got Turtle, I mean, I mean, me and Turtle gonna put it together, man. Oh, what you wanna hear last, man, from the city, man?
Man, I don't know, man, I don't listen to this. You got, you got a Luther Vandross, uh, video or not?
You know it's gotta be from the city, man.
Freddie Jackson?
Man, we gonna play something, man.
Play Rock Me Tonight for old time's sake by Freddie Jackson, man.
You know I can't play that shit.
You can't play that?
I didn't play, I gotta play stuff from the city, bro.
Oh, damn, man, I don't know, bro.
I got, I, I got you, man, yo, thank y'all for tuning in, man, go vote.
Go vote, I don't miss it.
It don't take but five, man, it don't even take that, it'd be a bunch.
Five minutes max.
It'd be a bunch of older people in there, they cool as hell, man, go get...
Some of them, some of them cool.
Man, well, I rode at Riceboro School, real act, homie, y'all already know signals, juh.
Quit hating, man, and quit lying too. You need to quit lying on people.
Go ahead, man.
I'm just telling the truth, baby.
We out. We out.